Your actions.
We're good to go.
Okay, I make a motion to call the meeting to order.
I second.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Marshall, trustee co., trustee Lanfear, mayor Plummer, motion passes.
Okay, so any board member with a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I will disclose from the, well, it's just a public hearing, right? So I don't need to disclose that, but the Carmella's Wine Bar.
I will.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Okay.
And you're disclosing what?
I'm disclosing.
For the record.
For the record, that I had welcomed him into the village and had some conversations with him prior to when he came for special permit.
Okay, and I will disclose that I had a meeting with the applicant for Carmella's Wine Bar was a brief meeting to talk about the process of how you move an application forward. Other than that, I have nothing to disclose.
Okay.
With that being said, would the clerk please give us the guidelines for the open meeting compliance certification?
Yep. Um. Good question. No, the co can speak during public comment. Please give your name and address, whether you're on Zoom or in the room, unless you're protected by an issue with law. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand if you wish to speak directly to the board. If you wish for me to ask the question to word, please put it in the Q and A. I don't pay attention to the chat function. And outside of that, I guess we'd have a nice courteous and respectful meeting.
Okay.
If I may.
Yeah.
Am I not mistaken as well that the public comment would be germane to the agenda item?
Public comment is open.
Open.
Yeah. It is open.
So the public hearing could be, okay.
The public hearing is coming.
Only public.
The hearing is closed.
With that being said, would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to its人民共和党 since one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and
Before we begin, I make a motion that we have a brief attorney-client session and call for a adjournment, a recess, excuse me.
Second.
We have a second roll call.
Trustee Lanfear.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee co.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
We'll be right back. Talk amongst yourselves.
We're good to go.
I make a motion, we reopen the meeting.
I second.
Roll call please.
Trustee co.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Oh.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're back. First thing up, because we have sort of a big meeting tonight, we're going to reduce the time limit on public comments this evening, just a couple of minutes instead of three. So does anybody wish to speak during public comment? Yes. Name and address, please.
Eighty-one South Street. As I'm sure members of the board are aware, there's a YouTube video being circulated on social media of a quote first amendment auditor harassing village staff. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the staff and officers who helped defeat the situation. I'm grateful no one was physically harmed but recognized the psychological distress it may have caused. This incident calls into question the safety and security of village hall. I hope the board takes this matter seriously and release safety protocols and infrastructure to ensure the safety of our village staff and public. And finally, I want to say thank you to village staff who show up every day to serve this community. Your dedication and hard work won't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Publicly in public comment? Yes, please come on up. Name and address, please.
My name is Edward Covenger, one oh five South Main Street. It's my understanding that the Pittsburgh community is putting a petition in to put some ribbons up on the flagpole, the flagpoles in support of Trans Week, and I would just like to waste my support if I get beaten up in the future.
Thank you very much for your input. Is there anyone else, please? Yes. Come on up, please.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Chacho, and I live with my husband at thirty-one thousand Avenue. Being transgendered is just a medical trend, is not just a medical transition, it's discovering who you are, living your life authentically, loving yourself, and spreading that love towards other people and accepting one another no matter the difference. How many years has it taken people to realize that we are all brothers and sisters and human beings and human race? All human beings deserve equal treatment no matter their gender, identity, or sexuality. I'm here tonight to support Pittsburgh Community United in putting up the ribbons on March thirty-first, which is International Transgender Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? So anyone online? So just a question. Oh, is there another hand? I'm sorry, did I just say? Oh, yes, I just didn't quite catch you better. Name and address, please.
Ralph Carter, two oh two Stoughton Berg Lane. I would speak in favor of the upcoming agenda item regarding the transgender ribbon project. I, my partner Dan, forty-four years, moved to Pittsburgh eight years ago, and we're very excited to be a part of Pittsburgh. I really think that the ribbon project really gives a very clear welcome that is embraced by a lot of young people in our community, and also, I'll say, grandparents and great-grandparents of the Highlands. I was kind of surprised, really, the kind of embrace of new neighbors at the Highlands, and then learning their stories as grandparents and great-grandparents, which was also my case as a child, that it was my grandparents that really wanted to know what's going on in my life and are you happy? And all right, and how, and how I'm finding, finding a relationship and, you know, making commitments and so forth. And so, so there's really two reasons to support this. One is the rocking becomes clear, and that Pittsburgh is looking forward and finding ways to welcome people to our community. The second is that is to acknowledge that the older generation embraces this because of getting to know their grandchildren and great-grandchildren.
Thank you. Thank you. That was helpful. Thank you. Yes. Come on up, name and address, please.
G D Gainsborough, four program circle. It's Rochester one four six twenty, but over by NASS, so Pittsburgh. I also want to support the transgender support ribbons for transgender day of visibility. I am involved in LGBTQ plus inclusion work. I used to be the education director at the Out Alliance, which was Rochester's LGBTQ plus agency, and I trained all of our speakers there, and so I got to hear a lot of coming out stories. And what really struck me by so many of these coming out stories, whether they folks were lesbian or gay or transgender, was that visibility, seeing, you know, a sticker of support or a ribbon of support or a flag flying like from the library, and what that meant to people. I mean, I had people literally say that seeing that kept them alive at moments of their life, because just knowing that there were people that supported them, and I feel right now that trans people are really under attack in many ways in our country, and I know that it's, uh, can be better than that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Sure. Anyone else? Okay, anybody online with a comment?
I have no comments.
Wait, there's another, there's a hand up, Victor? I think, yes. Yes. Oh, yes. Hi, Kevin, come on up, name and address. It's public comment.
Great. My name is Kevin Beckford, and I wanted to just talk a little bit today about why this is so important. I have both friends and family members from the trans community, and I've learned so much from them, both compassion and the importance of being able to be seen, be valued, and to be recognized. One of the things that is difficult right now in our country is that we're going through a lot of change, and we all see, and so are the areas of our country, and some of the people in our country that have been marginalized over, over time are feeling uniquely nervous about being seen and valued.
Two minutes to say.
Two minutes, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So I just want you to know that this is, they seem small in terms of the request, but it's huge in the eyes of the folks that it means something to. As being part of one of those groups that are marginalized in the United States, I struggle too with sort of feeling, you know, being seen, valued, and recognized. And there's a particular challenge for trans communities there, because in fact, we don't have to look that far in the Kennedy world, we saw it happen. That's really powerful, right? And so the more we can really make sure that people in our community, regardless of who you are or where you're from, whether you understand it or not, we have a duty to be able to be compassionate to those that are in need. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Your input, Kevin. Yeah. Kevin. Kevin. Anyone else with a comment? Anyone else?
I do not have any comments online.
Okay. Thanks everybody for those comments. They were all heartfelt, I could tell. Next up, we have a recognition, a proclamation. Is any, anybody here from the McBride family? Or them? Yeah.
Hi. Come up.
Come up. There you are. Oh, man, I didn't see you there.
Maggie, slide that chair right up. Slide it right up with us.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to come out.
Yeah. There you go. Mrs. McBride, welcome.
Sean, you're here too. Oh, my goodness. Okay, everybody's here.
Hi, our family.
Hi. Well, many of you know that we lost a wonderful member of our community recently, Bill McBride. He was a wonderful neighbor to many of us and also served on the historic preservation board and admirably for many years. And we would like, I would like to read this proclamation honoring the memory of William McBride. Whereas William McBride passed away on the twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-five, and whereas William McBride was a strong contributing member of the Village of Pittsburgh community for many years, and a proud retired Navy lieutenant and Vietnam War veteran, rose, who rose to the command of the USS Cormorant, and whereas William McBride was above all else, a loving husband and a father to a family that he raised here in the village of Pittsburgh with his wife, Sean McBride. And whereas William McBride made extensive contributions to the historic integrity of the architectural view shed of the Village of Pittsburgh for a period of sixteen years, first as a member and then as a chair of the Historic Preservation Board, and whereas William McBride was a leading force on the Historic Preservation Board in the review, development, and eventual approval of the multifamily apartment complex to be located at seventy-five Monroe Avenue, Pittsburgh, New York, working tirelessly for the reduction of the mass and the scale of that development so that it will exist more compatibly with the architectural rhythm, massing, and scale of the Village of Pittsburgh. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the trustees of Pittsburgh recognize the steadfast service and dedication of William McBride to the historic architectural preservation of the Village of Pittsburgh, and hereby declare that the memory of William McBride is worthy of her highest respect and esteem. I ask the trustees that are here to sign this. We'll be forwarding this to you. We'll wait till Justin comes back. Okay, next up, we have a historic proclamation, or historic Pittsburgh proclamation, excuse me. Is there anyone here this evening from the board of Historic Pittsburgh? Yes, please come up.
Yeah. Hi.
I'll say this is a special one to me too, because my mom and dad helped to fund the start of Historic Pittsburgh. Yeah. A proclamation honoring Historic Pittsburgh upon the occasion of its sixtieth anniversary. Whereas in nineteen sixty-five, a group of town and village of Pittsburgh residents collectively recognized the value of all aspects of Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh's historic resources, including its people, its architecture, its agricultural heritage, as well as its local businesses and community organizations. And whereas this grassroots movement of friends and neighbors formed a nonprofit volunteer organization chartered under the New York State Department of Education known as Historic Pittsburgh. And whereas for the past six decades, Historic Pittsburgh has provided educational outreach, technical preservation and support, and financial aid within the community and beyond. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the trustees of the Village of Pittsburgh hereby express gratitude and pay tribute to all members of Historic Pittsburgh, past and present, for their service to our community and historic preservation of our village, and for ensuring our history and legacy of historic preservation will continue for decades to come. And be it further resolved that the mayor of the village and trustees and the residents of our village recognize that Historic Pittsburgh is worthy of our highest respect and esteem. Thank you. That's the fun stuff, you know? And also the sad stuff, but you want to remember Bill McBride, so. Up next, we have, okay, I, since you want to sign, we have a non-universal permit application for Pittsburgh community. Yes? Welcome. Hi, come on up.
I'm Annalise, representing Pittsburgh community, a local nonprofit.
Last name, please, for the record.
Anna's Johnson Smith.
And address, please?
Forty-nine Falconville. So we have a proposal for you for transgender day of visibility, which is March thirty-first. We have letters of support from Wave Women Inc., which is a
Can you all hear? Okay, can you really pipe up, please? Thanks.
I'm a South African person, so.
Yeah. He's addressing the board, but it's a little, yeah.
So we have a permit application in for transgender day of visibility, and we have submitted to the board three letters of support from LGBTQ Latin organizations, Rochester LGBTQ Together, Wave Women Inc., which is a trans women Latin organization, and Next Generation Latin Transition, which is a trans masculine Latin organization. So we have wide community support from the LGBTQ community. It's an extremely hard time right now for the transgender community specifically, the murder of Sam Northquist, an ongoing validation nationally, really impacting people, and it impacts my family personally. And so we really think that having that visible sign of support on transgender day of visibility, showing people you are loved, you are seen, you are valid, you are welcome here in Pittsburgh would just be immeasurably helpful and good, good things for the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Is there any, any comment or questions from the board?
So I do have a comment. So that's a ribbon.
Yeah.
Okay. So I totally understand the acknowledgement and support, and that's a beautiful thing. I would love to see it matched with some education. You know, you're coming from an area where you personally have somebody that you know that's transgender, but there are many people that don't. And I think there's a lot of room for education so people can understand exactly what that means. And I think you'll get a lot more support and acknowledgement if you give us, community, us, some education as to what's it mean to be transgender, and, and you know, what exactly is that? And I just think that that would be a great addition to maybe collaborate at the end of the week to do some kind of presentation or some kind of like education. I just think that would be an amazing thing. So just
I agree.
Always an opportunity to learn, right? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Would you have a comment?
I just have some comments that I've prepared, and this is, it's a challenging topic when you don't know your own biases to communicate. And also, when you, you don't know your own biases when you communicate, and you also hear from residents and different views. And so I just put something down that I wanted to read and super. We are a community which appreciates diversity. We individually and sometimes together work toward a better understanding of the challenges that face transgender people. I appreciate Pittsburgh community's effort in this regard. I have both family and friends who are part of this community, and I still am learning every day about their experiences and struggles, find comfort in their voice, not just within small groups of allies or those of like identity, but within the larger society. Transgender Day of Visibility helps bring awareness to the disproportionate levels of poverty, discrimination, violence the community faces in comparison to cisgender people, and misrepresentation, mischaracterization, and stereotypes that present false depictions that shape our broader cultural understandings. However, I also recognize and appreciate that there are many in our community who are still working toward a better understanding, are concerned about local government's role to support social agendas that are broadly speaking, not universally accepted, or simply prefer residents rather than government to exercise the freedom of expression. That is to say, express support on private property versus in the public realm. Please know, I support our gender youth and our broader transgender community. I believe Pittsburgh Village supports our transgender youth and broader community. I am concerned when governments support a larger cultural movement that moves faster than, or maybe in contrary to, some of its constituents, or the majority of its constituents. Regrettably, at this time, I am unable to support the request, but I'm hopeful for a day when doing so is more broadly accepted and not as controversial. I am also hopeful that there are other avenues for Pittsburgh community to solicit awareness and support educational outreach, to support the transgender community's sense of belonging and comfort within our community.
Okay. Thank you.
Lily, did you have anything?
Lily, anything yet?
I do not. Mine are more practical considerations. We have, in the past, any requests that we have received for placing ribbons on our, our lamppost for cancer, any other cause, we have approved those. Given the precedent we have set, I feel most comfortable with continuing that, that procedure. The one thing, my, as to my practical concern, and that is when the ribbons will go up and when the ribbons will come down, if they come down in a timely manner, and not be left, not be draggled. That's all, that's my only concern.
We propose a one-week period, putting them up on March twenty-eighth and taking them down April fourth. So we're prepared to have a group of volunteers do that together. So this is up for one week.
And what's the actual day of recognition?
March thirty-first.
March thirty-first is the actual day of recognition.
Up for the period.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So ma'am, I'd like to make out a comment. So as, as the voice of our residents here in the Village of Pittsburgh, I've had some people reach out to me to discuss this issue, that they were not supportive or not comfortable with the rib, with the ribbons being up for one week, being that it's a one-day kind of awareness celebration, and they were just concerned that the week-long, having the ribbons up for a week long was a little bit overkill, shall we say? So why did you decide on a week? And would you consider a longer period, or a shorter period of time to do that?
Sure. It was easiest for us to have volunteers do it on the weekends, right? Put it down, we'll have us work, we'll get you Friday, kind of type jobs. It would be easiest for us to put it up on the weekend and take it down on the weekend.
So the thirty-first falls on what day do we know?
Monday.
Monday.
So you prefer to put it up a little bit later.
I'm just saying that this is, you know, this is some concerns that I have from residents that it's a week-long thing when it should be just like a day, a day celebration. Just a comment. Just, you know.
Um, I'd like to weigh in. And I'm going to start with two, two friends of mine that are trans that became friends because they stuck, they helped me in my garden. And it was my first year in office, and we made the decision to hang the Gay Pride flag, and which was donated to the board, and we have hung it ever since. So one of, one of the gardeners grew up in a different town and had a really, really tough time. And said when they came into Pittsburgh and they saw that banner hanging, they pulled over and cried. It meant that much, to be seen and to be valued. And that was just the banner. I can't even imagine what it must be like for the trans community right now to be dealing with everything going on nationally, statewide, and locally. I just cannot imagine saying no to this. This is a moment for our community to stand and to stand with everybody and include everybody and respect and value everybody. This isn't a social agenda. This is about a person who has identified who they are as a human being.
I also have just a clarifying comment. So the liability insurance, just help me, Dorothy, so is this asking the village to take out an insurance power? This is, this is your liability insurance.
Okay.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay. Thank you for that. Yes, and I knew that, but I just wasn't sure if this was an additional. Okay. I didn't know that. Okay.
I would like to add one more thing too, just about agendas and sort of affiliations and, you know, if you're trans or gay, you know, you have identified yourself in a certain way, you know, you don't belong to a club or an organization. You just belong to your own self, and that's how you see yourself. Just as when we put up the ribbons for cancer, you know, to be supportive of the efforts to cure cancer, no one asked for that either. No one wanted to join that club either. And I think there is a tremendous distinction to be made with that, and I would hope that the board would, would recognize that and vote for this. And I mean, if you want fewer days, I mean, whatever, but I think we need to do something. You know, I do. I just feel strongly about it, just if we want to, if we want to say, yes, we are welcoming and inclusive. Yeah. Okay. Lily.
Do I understand, because I'm looking at the date, it's coming up very quickly, that it is necessary for the board to waive the forty-five day requirement?
Yes.
Yeah. I will make a motion that we waive the forty-five day requirement for non-universal use permit for the purpose of ribbons for the, is it the community group that is sponsoring? Okay, for the community.
Pittsburgh community group application. We have a motion.
I second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Trustee co.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
This is the way of forty-five day.
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. That's
So could we, again, I just, again, I can feel responsible to be the voice of people that have contacted me. Would you consider doing it a, maybe a week long, like a weekend? Can we do it like on a, ribbons go up on a Saturday and then they come down Monday night? Would, would you guys consider that?
Just shortening the timeframe.
Just shortening, because, yeah, just, you know, I'm just trying to make
I just want to make sure
Make everybody's happy. I want to just, I want to be respectful to people that have commented to me.
Sure. But looking at Friday, Tuesday, that would be the twenty-eight part.
That's better.
It would go up at like five-thirty, so Friday night.
So would you guys consider that?
Okay, so, so it's, it's going up on Friday evening.
On Friday evening, and that would be up for the weekend, which is when people walk the village.
I guess they can gather on Tuesday.
Yeah. And then take them down Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Tuesday afternoon.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, good. Thank you for commenting.
Yeah, thank you.
What it's about.
Again.
This way, everybody kind of gets a piece of the, the, yeah. Is there anything on? This way everybody kinda gets a piece of the, the, yeah. Is there anything online?
No, but we received two additional emails and I just wanted.
Oh, yeah, we, okay, thank you. The clerk has also received correspondence from residents.
So if the board would like me to read it. Gabriel Diaz, eighty one South Street. Unfortunately, due to early scheduled time of this meeting, I'm unable to attend. Instead, I send this letter as a token of my strong support for the permit to hang ribbons for the transgender visibility here in the village. I can also say with great confidence that the majority of my immediate neighbors would similarly support the proposal. Peg Ruble, I firmly support putting up ribbons for our transgender friends. Let's be welcoming, inclusive village. Also, no ribbons will not influence children. What they will learn from this is love and respect for all.
Okay.
And just to let you know that those letters have been read to the board and they are just as powerful from Gabe and Peg as if they were standing here in front of us.
I just note, any letters received earlier in the day was already forwarded to the board for their review, so they've received.
We, we see everything that's coming in. If it comes in late, it's red. Yeah. Your motion.
I, I, I will make the motion that we approve a non-municipal use permit application for Pittsburgh community ribbon installation. On the date specified, I can't keep my head exactly right now. March twenty eighth.
Oh, the twenty, twenty through the what?
March twenty eighth through April first. April fourteenth.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
So, second please.
I will second.
Well called, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Can we discuss? Can we have another?
We can bring it back to the board. Is there additional discussion then?
So again, I just wanna say thank you guys for being um collaborative with us and, and to, to decrease your ribbon um time out in the, in the public. So I really appreciate that and, and that movement really says a lot. Um, that you're really doing this because you're, you're working with us and, and that's the way I want you to see me is working with the community, trying to not be all things. So I'll be able to try to satisfy everybody's desire here in our village. So, so I thank you for that and that really made a big difference as to why um I'm interested in supporting.
Okay, any, any other comment? Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, I guess from the heart of it, there are children who don't know where they belong. And as much as I've talked to residents outside who might have had concern and, and even I sometimes social agendas where settlements getting involved and try to pull people forward to progress. These are just kids sometimes and they don't have a home, they don't feel it. And for three days, we can help them be like. I'm okay.
Yes.
So we have a second?
Yeah, we have a second. Let's call the vote, please.
Okay, trustee Marshall. Trustee Coe? Trustee Lanfer?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passed.
This is a proud moment. I'll help you hang the ribbons.
Or take them down.
Okay, so let's see. Next up, uh the Friends of the Arboretum signage. Oh, sorry, I skipped one. I take that back. The special permit application for twenty one State Street. Anyone here for the application or? Might be online. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
Oh, that's the new spa. We're gonna be healthy as we may.
Not being the applicant, um.
Steve, did you hear anything? No.
Do we have the application? Do you have the?
I have the application. Unfortunately, the copy I have in front of me is rejected.
Yeah.
Um, this is simply a request to go to public hearing.
Yeah.
Maybe they didn't know they needed to be here.
I think there might have been confusion with everything going on and.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if the board's comfortable.
So you have another foot spot in facial skincare.
Yep. Yeah.
It's a twenty one State Street that they say the floor is burned.
I don't know if they have the whole building.
There have been similar uses.
I know that there have been. Sure, you're right.
This is the second floor, Lily, do you know? Second floor?
Yeah. Oh, that I don't know. Whether it's the whole building or just.
I mean.
Feet on the bottom, face on the top.
We move to the next item and Steve's gonna reach out.
Okay, let's move along. Ah, okay, so next up, Friends of the Arboretum signage proposal. Hi, Jen. Yeah, come on up. Grab, grab a chair.
Fine prints to do.
Yeah.
And uh we can, you know, move it right along.
I walked the arboretum today, actually. Looks a lot different than last time I walked it.
Um, Jim White, eleven East Jefferson Circle. Uh, on behalf of the Friends of the Arboretum, uh firstly, thank you for inviting us to come back and to include some of the information that you have requested to be enhanced from um our last meetings. And at the last meeting, you had the proposals from the uh meeting of a year ago when the signs were approved. And in your packet, uh you'll, you'll find from tonight's meeting, we had the update that you requested. They had a nice clean bill of goods worth thousand nine hundred dollars for the three signs. Two, two sided and one, one sided. And you have an updated graphic then on that. There are two or three items that you need to make your decision on and we can assist you with that. In the one drawing, you knew that there was a difference between the signs being specified at twenty four inches above grade to the bottom of the sign and up. And the other is thirty six inches from the bottom on up. And to get that uh, the point of that decision, I have prepared a limited list to ask you to pass those amongst yourselves. Did a quick uh graphic for some of the signs in and around the Pittsburgh various parts. And with that. What you'll find on, on the drawing that I just gave you and I, and I'll show you really, really quick. Here's the King's, the, the current Kings Ben sign that we see driving down the road. And of course, I point out the fact that you're um in a car and driving by. The uh next one is right out here across the street going into the port of Pittsburgh. And that one includes, and I've thrown it in for reference, here's your typical historic marker with its thing and, and the height that it has for that. Uh, on the canal where you walked up to it, Great Embankment Park is a low sign uh for viewing and the last one is also the drive by Marsh Road. The, the Great Embankment Park. So when you. When, when you do look through, I placed the two signs at the two ends and you can see kinda how they look. Now, here's a couple other little thoughts. As I was walking, what I noticed, a lot of the signs that are this height all have graffiti. If it's right along the trail, like right there within reach, it probably does. On the lower ones don't seem to pick it up. So as you look at the maps that you have on, that I brought in tonight, we're showing the three locations. In each case, they're actually a little ways into the woods or far enough away that people wouldn't be walking by them. But still, our recommendation is to go with the twenty four inches. It makes it a little more subtle. So you're not looking at the sign, you're looking at the woods. You're there for the woods. On two of the three approaches, the signs would actually be slightly up a hill as you're approaching. So the thirty six is just gonna put it up that much higher.
Jim, I'd also like to say that kids, kids are gonna be using that. So to, to be like at the height of a, of a child.
Right, and, and with it being up that little bit higher on those hills, in those two cases, um, you know, we might even put out a bit of a low ground plan or just to keep people away, you know, it's just. And then um, so our recommendation is to go with, with twenty four inches. And then the last decision that you would have to make is on the um, the sign company put in a proposal for you. That they could come in once a year for the first three years, five hundred dollars annually. They would wash signs, wax it. Um, the signs come with a nine year warranty. Uh, my question, could the DPW take care of that and just do it annually and you'll get one probably twenty years of those signs annually.
Can you cover that again, please? Just wash and wax?
They're, they're, they're gonna come in each spring, just wash each of the signs down and then they put, I don't know if it's a paste wax, but some.
How much is that again?
Five hundred dollars each year.
So you're asking if we wanted to have that done or if we wanna take it on ourselves?
That's, right, right. That, that's just a choice that we have.
And Jim, on the um, uh sign language um invoices on the uh packet.
Yes.
It's showing the nineteen point five eight by thirty six by two. Is that not the twenty four inch one? That's this one, not this one?
No, that's another dimension.
Okay.
That it twenty inches is, is the, the sign itself.
Okay.
The thirty six is how wide it is. And, and then from that earlier one, you have to.
So then this does match up with what you're referencing?
That, correct. Okay, thank you. All right.
That's what we got. I would say we move forward with the invoice and uh see if Zach uh might be willing to accept, making sure they stay pretty clean and figure out what a tax overhaul looks like.
Yeah, as long as there is a recommended product that we can use and we get some sort of tutorial on the application of it, then I'm sure we can figure it out.
Great.
Has there been anything done with our gateway signs? Just in terms of like washing them or anything, I mean, you know, they hang in for quite a while. But I mean, we can circle back and. Okay, so it may not be as intensive as every single year potentially. That's what I'm thinking, you know, just in terms of what they would do.
The same uh material build is what the entrance signs are. All right. Which is the phone? Yeah, which the stuff seems to last one time.
Probably as a half life.
Lily, you might be able to add to this, but I believe the board had hired um that language at one point to come through and repaint some of the signs.
Lily, do you, Lily, do you recall that if sign language ever came through and repainted any of our signs?
Nothing I recall.
And that way, it may help with UV. I'm just guessing of the longevity.
I think we could sort it out on our end though, in terms of what it would take, rather than popping five hundred bucks.
Touch up of the gold we paint. Yep, that's the only thing I remember and that was a number of years ago.
Okay, but you know, at, at some point in time, a little bit of maintenance. Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't know about that either.
I don't think I've ever seen wax.
I never, you know, maybe a Simonize. I don't know. Yeah, Steve?
I mean, if you were to paint the square, it looks like. Yeah, no, those, tho- those trails, those, the trails actually, no spruce trail, it's just four by four all over the area. I just want to place and see if it's all where they weren't related to everything else.
So I make a motion to approve the invoice as presented?
Why don't we talk to the treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay. I was asked to see, we have received some donations in support of signage for the arboretum in twenty one. There is four hundred dollars received and that's in a deferred revenue. Um. Where are you taking the money for? Because there is not enough funds in the arboretum line.
So we only have a four hundred dollar donation right now?
Yeah.
Do we have our performance at all?
Um, so if it's, if it's no, no money in this year's budget, is it something we could factor in next year? Like, cause we're coming up to.
Correct. In next year's budget, you have a budget line of thirty five hundred.
Oh, well then.
What about parks?
Parks?
What if we were to?
Well, it's only a couple of months.
Yeah, is there anything in the general? Pull it out of general?
Work.
Or the uh? Can we move it out of fund balance for last year?
You would be just a general fund, use of fund balance and transferring.
Yeah.
Um, I would.
I mean, it's four grand over what we're putting into reserves already later today. So, I mean, I suppose you can reduce the reserve funding by five grand.
You could take it out of the reserve account.
We could do that.
So if we wanted to slightly pinch reserve funding and. I mean, we need signs. I think they look nice too and it's a nice touch. So based on what you're looking at, we're funding reserves with seven hundred and fifteen. And it's a infrastructure repair, it's not a repair, building replacement improvement. This is a building, equipment repair. What if we were to just reduce one and then take it out of general for the last, take it out of fund bank for last year, then the numbers all would have to be the same.
Take it out of um, I mean, a budgeted existing reserve, I'd take it out of, I think it was um, equipment or infrastructure. Take it from infrastructure.
Okay, so then when we fund infrastructure later, we'll just pinch it down.
Those numbers aren't in there. The budget just from the current budget, take it from the reserve, from the infrastructure to fund the arboretum line.
Okay, so we're looking at taking how much?
We're taking four thousand five hundred or?
Forty four hundred, right? Cause we've got four hundred, oh, forty five hundred.
Um, and you can um allow us to send, cause I think they're gonna wanna immediate deposit of fifty percent. So allow me to issue that payment immediately.
Hey Jim, do we have an idea of timing? And then you guys were putting them up or they?
If this includes all the installation.
So four to six weeks-ish, you're thinking?
So then if I were to make a motion to approve the invoice as presented for forty nine hundred dollars, four hundred coming from the old donation. And then forty five hundred coming from the infrastructure reserve line on this year's budget.
Reserve, yeah, you got it.
And to issue payment for half of the invoice balance to me.
For the down payment?
Yeah.
That's the motion.
Yes.
I second.
Okay. I mean, he got through it once. Don't make him do it again.
Trustee Lanfer?
Was it technical?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, my vote is yes.
She's definitely a yes. Trustee Coe? Trustee Marshall? Mayor Palmer? Motion passed.
Okay, thanks very much, Jim.
Thanks for your work on this.
Oh, it's just wow. It is the magical hour. Okay, it's six o'clock. And we have a public hearing for the special permit application at three Shane Place, Camilla's Wine Bar. Hi, Joe. Come on up, have a seat.
Can I stand?
Or stand, yeah, standing is always good. Yeah, do the whole thing. Do the whole thing, sure.
Um, at the beginning of the meeting, we were asked to dispose. And I did forget that we had a brief conversation, not before you came for application, but after. Uh, when you, I, you asked me if there was anything that I would like to hear in the next presentation. Uh, I think that was the question. And I said, no, that I thought you were very thorough. And that was the extent of our conversation. Other than that, we have had not any conversation prior to coming to the meeting last time. We had no conversations at all. I had not met you. Met you recently and we had a brief conversation. I just wanna make that clear.
Thank you.
If there was nothing to stand in the way of my vote.
Okay, yeah, cause we only have four people here. Okay. Yeah, I know. All good, we're here for you. Okay, um, so, um. All good, we're here for you. Okay, um, so, um, here we are. And we all have the application in front of us and it's very thorough. Thank you for all your information. Products, we're, we're, we have everything here. Um, is there anything you'd like to add?
I have a very similar monologue from the last time. Um, I didn't know if you were a public librarian, but it was necessary.
I'm sorry?
I just, I had a very similar monologue from the last one, because it was very similar to what I would publish here today, so.
Okay.
Didn't know if it was worth it or.
Okay, well then why don't we bring it back to the board and see if the board has any questions for Mr. Laughing?
Yeah, um, the only thing, uh, was the modification of the permit. Uh, so remind me the new hours that you're applying for.
So it will be from eleven to eleven and it'll be, uh, seven days a week.
Great. All, everything else in the application is as it was?
Absolutely.
Steve, did you have any concerns? Great.
You're set there, okay.
I have no concerns.
Any other comments from the board or questions?
Uh, uh, there was just one clarification that came up at the, at the last and it wasn't from the applicant. And that was of the tavern district question and why this wasn't included in the tavern district. And I think that for clarification, um, and, and I think it's, it's critical to me. And, and, and that's why I bring it up, is that the eleven PM closing would not be able to be enforced. By this village if it were in the tavern district. If it was included in the tavern district. The, um, the liquor authority has control over that aspect. In this way, we are able to be sensitive to nearby neighbors by, uh, enforcing, uh, or at least requesting from the applicant. Uh, eleven o'clock closing time, which means that the cleaning crews would come up in after that and the bottles and everything, the trash. Uh, coming out of the building afterwards would not be too much of a disturbance to neighbors at two or three o'clock in the morning. So you're sensitive to that.
Our last call around ten, ten thirty kind of doors are, you know, everyone's getting ushered out.
That was part of the.
Of course.
Right, so that was part of the consideration of the board when we looked at this tavern district. And made, drew a line and it was a purposeful line because of the proximity of residential property. So I just wanted to clarify that, why it wasn't included in the tavern district.
Okay.
My, my comment, and this is kind of a silly one, but boy, if you can get people in the village of Pittsburgh to stay until eleven. You know, really fun, because I've never seen any activity at eleven o'clock, except for Thursdays, obviously, but we, we close down.
I've heard, uh, but I also guard, you know, a lot of conversation with people on the village that say that there's not a lot of places open. And that's why, um, so to have a. And I like Thursdays like the rest of us. Um, a class here, a little easier going, um, loudly. For, you know, other people.
Sure.
I think if you build it, they will come.
Hey, I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
So this is just a question of perspective more for us in the future, but as a, as an applicant and your business owner and community. Would you find the, uh, process, uh, convenient for you? Was it, was the whole work through, um. Well received in your.
So coming from Illinois, you know, I do a lot, as much research as I could have, uh, being back in New York, uh, not having gone through this in New York before.
Yeah.
Uh, obviously with this special use permit, you know, because the space prior was the similar concept that was the one that had thrown me off. However, the board at the time did an amazing job at helping get going.
Village.
The village, uh, getting the wheels in motion to get this going and notify me so I can get the process going. And it was, it has gone very smoothly.
And you've always thought of it as the restaurant with the, the wine bar. You never thought of it as just a wine bar with no food, had you?
Absolutely not. Food and wine should be together always. Uh, well, it's the other.
Yeah.
I would never think, also, it's just a sort of safe thing too. You would always want food for your guests, essentially.
You're talking to a professional Somali and who knows the business, I can tell.
So this question is to Steve. Steve, should we go through, uh, the various lines when we do this? Oh, no, not Steve, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Good, what, what line?
Jeff.
What was the question?
I'm asking Jeff in regards to the purpose and applicability that were included in the packet. Um, should we go through each one?
True.
Okay, we need to open the public hearing.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
I make motion of.
I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open on this matter. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anybody online wishing to speak on the application?
I do not have any comments on the.
Okay. Is there a motion?
My only comment is we're very excited that you're here and I think most residents are as well.
We're in the public hearing, you can.
Oh, okay, all right. So should we make a motion to close the public hearing? I make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board. Your comment?
So I spoke as a resident before, I'm speaking as a trustee. We are so happy you're here and so, so are all our residents, so thank you for being here.
All right, do you want me to go through these steps?
Yeah, why don't we do that and start moving through?
So we'll just hammer it through. Um, so the restaurant code asks, um, is it in accordance with comprehensive plan? Yes.
Yes.
Um, talks about allowed in specific districts. Yes, Steve, it's conferred. Location restrictions, this one, uh, does not apply, though there is one line where a restaurant is located within two hundred meter feet of a residential user district. The village board may impose restrictions to the hours of operation when not doing this beyond the eleven, eleven application in this case. Uh, let's see, does it create a hazard to the public safety, general welfare? No. Uh, does it alter the character of the neighborhood to interfere with residents' normal use of property? No, and there's more beyond that. Um, does it include fast food service, drive-through facilities, drop period in any manner as a nightclub? No. Uh, cause a traffic hazard or unsafe conditions? No. Uh, due to its location or proximity to a residence would result in nuisances or excessive negative impacts that may not be feasibly mitigated. Uh, no, and in fact, we had the resident come and support it, um, at the last meeting.
Take it for number five, dam sensitive use landscapes, natural features or historic features that may not feasible. Nope.
Nope.
Chair to our historic building, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, fail to provide adequate parking to support the proposed use without causing a parking shortage to private lot across the street. And you actually suggested it was remain open as such. Um, additional application requirements, complete copy of any application filed with New York State Liquor Authority. Um, we need to do that. So let me just read this again. Additional application requirements, a complete copy of any application filed with and license issued by the New York State Liquor Authority. Shall be provided with any application subject this chapter. Do we need to worry about that?
I have my liquor license application that I'm happy to pass on to you if you'd like. Additional approval, waiting for the space to be built.
It could be part of the approval. Yeah, just because you're in process with them.
A waste management plan shall be, uh, required to provide a location that has a room to accommodate refuse in accordance with the code. So that would be with Steve and it's already been done with, uh, special permit, uh, other considerations. Uh, conformance with district building use and lot requirements, that's all set. Conformance with all applicable regulations for certain uses, that's done. You have to see, this is the same thing that was did, just different words. So then I will, Steve, what do we do here? Do we have to label it any?
Um, no, those are just, those are the findings that you've made in conforming.
Jeff. Gentlemen to my left. Been here longer. Hey, we're thinking about other stuff tonight.
Okay, so, so we're, it's down to being compliant.
It is.
And that's on the record.
So I'll make a motion. There you go. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit application. Uh, with only one contingency, that is the liquor authority licenses submitted to the, uh, building inspector.
Okay, send it to Steve or block it.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, good luck. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay. Well, that's defer, all right. Uh, next up is the review of the LMC contract. This is an update. Uh, on the contract with, um, the engineer. Um, I think you, everybody has received that in their packet, uh, regarding the seventy five million. Uh, this engineer is providing additional oversight on this project. Um, so what you're seeing is just, you know, the amendment to that, so we can move, move things forward there. Is there any questions that you have?
Let's look, Steve. Any issues or? I didn't see anything, but.
Uh, which lawyer knew foundation since we.
Take it now.
All right, um. I'll entertain a motion, just a.
Make motion to approve contracts as presented.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, reserve funding and I think we've all seen a lot about the reserves. Yeah.
All right.
So at this point, unless there's, uh, you know, any other thoughts or considerations regarding, you know, we spoke about how they were going to be funded, all of that. Um, we, we, what we're looking for tonight is for the board to actually direct Jeff now to, to create the language. For this one.
The transfers.
Yeah, for the transfers and that at all, so we can set this up.
Okay, I make a motion to direct Jeff to create the language so that we can move. Uh, the amounts that have indicated in, uh, the packet, uh, to each reserve as indicated in the packet. You want me to read them off?
No, no, um, they will be, they'll, they'll be in the form of regulations. He will adopt for each.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I second.
You have a motion and a second.
I just have to say, I was waiting for questions.
We have so.
All right, well, I'm thrilled, so trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And, um. I don't know if in my motion I said for the general fund or for the sewer, but I presume it was both.
If you've slid a resolution posted in that.
I'm sorry.
Yes, it is. Yeah, problem serves, okay.
Yep.
So we're covered. We're covered, okay.
And before we get into the reports, I'm going to excuse myself because I'm gonna make an airport run.
My gosh, you make the airport run, you're going away. You're, you're, you're going out of town?
Taking off. Thank you, yeah. It's your evening, Josh, okay. Um. Next up, DPW report.
Before we go there, we had the special permission, permit application.
Oh, right.
Oh, right.
Oh, oh, did?
Just a quick note, uh, the second floor comment is only germane to the traditional downtown zone. It's not germane to.
To the state, right.
I think with just this, we can still move the public hearing.
Yeah, Jeff.
Does the board have questions about anything additionally they need on this application? Because that could be related to the applicant on your way to, to the public hearing so that they showed up.
Everything's already been.
Everything's ready.
Yeah.
If you have questions from the application, then Dorothy, you can.
Convey that.
Steve will contact.
Okay.
I, I do have one, proposed hours of operation, eight to twelve hours.
Is that four AM?
Like, what is that?
It says eight to twelve hours are gonna be open, but what time do they open and what time do they close?
So let's get a clarification on that.
Yeah, clarification for that.
That's an action item, please.
Got it.
Clarification on this application, okay, for hours of operation?
No, is, is on disposal, everything?
Yeah, I think.
Thing generates, described well enough for the board's status judgment.
And if they want to further to spot, further describe, I'm gonna put spots facial skincare is, yeah, but I don't think I need it.
I think there was a, a similar business there prior to this, so I think it, I believe it's.
And it is zoned for the years.
Excuse me?
It is zoned for the.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to move this to public hearing?
What date, please?
On April eighth at six PM. April eighth at six PM.
Second.
We have a second?
Okay, trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks for bringing it back, I forgot.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, the DPW report. Hi, Zach.
Sorry, I wasn't able to get you guys a formal report on time. I had a busy on fast week and I'm dealing with some other things this week so far, so. Um, majority of the work that we've been doing, um, you probably would see, it's mostly just spring cleanup. Trying to deliver as quickly as possible. Um, transitioning from winter work to spring, summer, getting all schedules ready to go and work kind of outlined for us so we have a plan. Um, on top of that, what we've been doing, um, job and safety training, uh, for myself. I've got a lot of new employees, a lot of training, so, um. And the vehicle purchases, which the quotes were included in the, uh, in packets, all of you guys had just reviewed that. And, um, mirrors under the North Main Street Bridge, we have the other conversation about, uh, if you hasn't noticed it.
No.
Oh, the mirrors, yeah, I haven't been down that way, but that's always an issue with the.
Yes, so last, when it first came up last, I think it was last summer, we just, when we finally had, had them up. Um, through end of the cycle season, um, they had already been spray painted like three or four times. So I was trying to clean the spray paint off of them, um, was problematic. And now one of the mirrors is missing and there's still spray paint that's kind of patched itself into the other mirror, so.
Is there any way of getting them high, hanging them off the top, right?
Yeah.
As high as we can go. All right, so the question is, is it worth the cost and upkeep if they're always getting vandalized for us?
It's a tough call.
It is, because it's a safety issue.
It is a safety, but if it's, if they're spray painted over half the time, it's not, it's not very safe.
Yeah, it's not going.
Lot of money.
Right.
And there's no way of hanging them off the bridge?
DOT won't allow some testing things to be outside the bridge. Um, so I mounted them in a way that was similar to, uh, what? Uh, a mirror that exists on our Clover Street at lock starting to. And that way we wouldn't have to see it from the DOT. It was just a kind of.
Uh, I was just gonna come up with a uniquely different novel idea, which is just get clear, sticky, removable. Uh, tape of some sort or a cover, so just go, every time you see it get spray painted, just go peel it off and put a new one on.
If there was material that worked like that, I'm not sure.
Three M probably has one.
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, yeah, I like that idea.
Something opposed to that to work.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure the viability issues would come if there wasn't a, if it was effective.
No, I mean, basically you're just looking at clear sort of sticky stuff, kind of like what you put on the outside of a cell phone.
Right, like a cell phone cover.
It's like a Saran Wrap and then you peel it off.
Oh, I see what you're saying, not the actual.
Like a little cover.
Covering it and taking the sheet off.
Yeah, right, just like that up and go to three M or go somewhere. I, I know when I had, um, some windows. You know, I was looking for, um, that sort of material for the inside of a bathroom window down low where it was clear. And, uh, I wanted to have it be blocked from the outside, but when I was looking for that, you saw a lot of clear stuff as well.
You can get clear windows.
So do we want to replace the two mirrors that are there in Kai?
Are they that bad? That they need to be replaced? Okay.
I would say replace the mirrors and start with this new idea and every time that it gets spray painted, just peel it off, put a new one up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then this, this area is monitored by video recording. Could we put a little sign, this area is monitored by video surveillance?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
But that's a low tech solution that may, may at least be practical, you know, and manageable for everybody.
Worth a shot.
Yeah, exactly.
Even if it's not perfect and there's little bubbles or treatises or like whatever.
Totally good with it.
That's, that's fine. I thought you were talking about like the actual.
Okay, so that's one. What else?
We're good. Um, I guess just approval on the purchase of the large dump trucks.
Big one.
Yeah.
Big one.
And then, um, I don't know if you want to discuss, uh, the leaf vacuum at this meeting tonight, although there are only three of you. But it's, it was a little more than what I anticipated for some of them. And also we would have to have approval because the the pricing is based on source well, which is a cooperative purchasing contract sorts. And I was hoping that I could get Jeff to weigh in on the process of approving, the board approving a cooperative purchasing contract that it's, it'd be similar to like how the state or the county functions and just be as a pinkeye back up as any contract in general. This is just a cooperative that I think is run by Michigan.
And the, and the, the benefit is.
Cost, right?
You're in the pool with everybody.
Yeah, I like that idea. I think we should ignore that.
And no bit.
And no bit. So you're just, you're good, you're in.
The price is what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Find out the answer to your question.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to find out the answer to your question.
Okay. All right, so the quote is what it is. If the village would like to purchase a new leaf vacuum, that's what the number would be. There's only, this is to replace a kind which the, um, the ODB, Old Dominion, um, they really do have market lockdown on leaf vacuums. It's a kind to what we have, which is two thousand eight, which still is a good machine. So even fifteen, seventeen years later, it's still running strong.
Okay, so are we looking for an additional one or to replace this one?
To replace this.
Is it broken?
It's, it's old and we've been experiencing a lot of problems with it.
You had some issues with this.
Partly was all this up, you know, the fall, quite a few days.
And you're looking to get additional leaf boxes?
Yeah, yeah, that's included with, uh, so new leaf box is included in, uh, you know, bits back for one of these trucks. And then the second leaf box will be included, uh, the spec for the.
Which I think will make a difference too.
Yeah, having these new leaf boxes will allow us more movement, unless that was not leave for a truck to go.
So what I don't know from what I see in front of me is the difference in what we're seeing and what you're recommending we improve and what is in the budgets.
Okay, so this is tricky. This was a budgetary item, uh, coming out of this year to do one truck. Um, to put it to a ban and then next year to do a bond, but you're so close to next year and it's turning out that it's going to be a year of delivery. So I did talk to Bernie Donigan and initially ran the five hundred thousand. He's going to give me updated numbers. I just see the updated numbers and it could be on me, but you're looking at about. Around fifteen thousand about payment for ten or, it could go to fifteen years for the equipment. So it'd be whether the board wants to do a ten or fifteen year bond, but the thing is you wouldn't even be doing that yet. You'd have to do a bond resolution. All you would be agreeing to tonight is a letter of.
Letter of intent.
Letter of intent to purchase these vehicles since it's a year out, so.
It's getting us in the.
What it's doing is, one thing it is doing, you can put the order in, it's protecting the pricing.
Oh.
Which between the time we talked about this originally went up fifty thousand dollars, so if we can protect that pricing probably is in our benefit.
Let me ask you just a couple of questions. So we have truck one, it says two forty. I see what's in it. Truck two, it says three oh seven. I see what's in it, right? I get to the next page where it says Valley Fab and Equipment and it shows sixty two hundred. That's embedded in the truck one cost. So is that first page just a summary of everything that comes after it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I got Valley Fab and Equipment doing some stuff and then I've got SEI doing something else.
The SEI, that is the leaf vacuum. So that should have been at the end of all of these quotes.
That is not included in that.
That is not from the truck, yes.
Okay. So the leaf vacuum is separate and distinct. And I'm looking at ninety two thousand four hundred.
Yes.
What's the eighty four thousand in comparison? Oh, that's two thousand four pricing versus five pricing. Joy.
Yeah.
Okay, remind me.
So just to be clear, I'm not looking for approval of purchase, the leaf vacuum.
Okay, you're just showing.
Yeah, because I think we still need approval from.
From Jeff.
For the cooperative purchase.
It doesn't have to be so as well. The, the question is whether or not, whether or not that's a safe substitute for a bidding process.
Yeah.
Because the estate contract, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know much about cooperative.
I don't know.
Do we know?
I, I, I would, I think we need to research it a little bit.
Pass along all the information to Dorothy, so she has the link to the website.
Okay.
And Dorothy wants to distribute that to everybody on board and Jeff.
I did review the site. The thing it did for me is they mentioned the municipality needs to take. My guess is we have to do some kind of motion second to accept a cooperative purchase.
To move that process.
Yeah, but I, I think that needs to be verified and.
Are there any other municipalities that we can even kind of get a gauge on stock?
As far as I know, there are a lot of.
Well.
Not that these, 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 uh, these vendors are, you know.
Anybody close?
I would imagine so, but nobody I can speak of.
I can.
Right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, just see what's out there, you know. I don't have any gauge of.
Yeah, I, this one has, this is first time. But I would suggest to the board, if they're looking at this, this be a early May decision. And at that point, look at where we stand with the budget and if we feel we need to move to do this, let's shift money around it and then make the purchase.
Comment is, thanks for the information, but do nothing now. We'll hear more from you back.
Yes.
Okay, um, the next one is the Conway Beam Truck Group.
So the Conway Beam, that is the vendor for the actual truck, so the cabin chest. And then Valley Fast is the up there. So they would take, once Conway Beam were to get the truck in.
Okay.
The truck that gets shipped to Valley Fast for being.
Yeah, the ordering of the agenda had that SEI sort of snuck in between. So what you're saying is the Conway Beam is the truck and it slides up to the top and it's connected.
Yeah, it's sort of out of order a little bit.
All right, that's okay. Uh, now I understand what I'm looking at. That makes some sense.
Sorry, that is a merge issue on my part.
No, that's okay.
We, we can, we can sort of.
Yeah, I was just piecing together what I'm looking at. Now I understand. Okay, so then, what do you need from us?
If you're good to do the trucks, um, I would authorize the letter of intent or the purchase, whatever it's called.
Letter of.
Letter of, thank you. I had it right. Uh, we can get the, if you want to authorize me to reach out to the bonding attorney, I can get at least the bond resolution done for the board. So we have that in place when it's time to purchase.
I'm not sure if it would have to be two different letters of intent or four, because technically it's two different trucks, so.
Well, it's four, it's two different entities that are doing the work.
Two different entities, but two different trucks that each get outfitted differently. So there, there's a contract or, um, a quote that would be needed.
What, what do we need to do for a motion? That's where I think we're going.
I have a felony letter of intents that would be needed.
Can we, can we do a motion to, the necessary letter of intent to purchase truck one and truck two and three quarter?
I guess.
What she said.
And I'm thinking that it's probably going to be two letters of intent, one to the truck people and the other to the. No, I don't know. You got to figure that out. I mean, just, just say, what do you need?
From the, yeah, yeah.
So the vendor, vendor's telling us what we need, four letters or four or two letters.
Okay, so the motion could be letters of intent to purchase the two trucks and, and have them fitted appropriately with the two different vendors. With, um, Zach, getting, defining the information to bring back to.
I would just say. We're authorizing the letters of intent necessary to provide the village with a finished product for these two trucks.
Oh, that's good. Finished product.
Which I've said.
Yeah, which I've said. Okay.
All right, I make a motion to authorize Jeff to, or the village to submit letters of intent necessary to provide the finished products as noted, uh, in our packet and to have Dorothy reach out to a bond attorney as necessary to move that forward.
My second.
Okay, trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Co.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you, Zach. Do we ever mulch our street trees?
I was gonna get back. Yes.
Because I think that like, you know, South Main, North Main, and even Monroe and State Street, if we could just do those. Cause you walk by Del Monte and it's all nice and mulched and then you see our street trees and they're just done there. They're just sitting there.
Yeah.
Because I think.
Give me a burning that they sit in, um, the mulch does tend to wash later and get trampled, quite often, a little bit different than the grounds around the Del Monte. Um, we try to keep up on it as much as possible, but every year we kind of tend to go a different color mulch, so that's to be determined yet.
Okay.
Just breaking.
But they'll be mulched.
Yeah.
Great. And then the other thing I have, now that we have those beautiful new, uh, brick sidewalk areas, I know last year they were just overgrowing with weeds. Is there, are we going to be able to take, because they're just so pretty, but then you got the weeds going on?
We have enough staff now to really maintain it.
Great, thank you.
That's really worth it.
I was like, yeah, I still need to come around and breathe the soap and spelt.
While we're on, um, budget items, this may be aside, but the temporary, or no, the preliminary budget adoption. Did we already do that?
You did.
Well, we.
You did intend a budget last.
I know we had a budget meeting last week, but we basically adopted the.
You did intend, you adopted the tentative budget. We'll have the public hearing next meeting. Um, we're working on the budget.
I knew we were done. I just forgot that we actually did it. I thought it was going to be this meeting.
You locked it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It went so smooth.
Yeah.
Um, no, we'll have the budget.
Formalized for the presentation.
Oh, next meeting and I'll be issuing out, the legal notice went out. I'll be putting out the normal thing I put out.
Great.
For the public and I can't speak tonight apparently, so, but we'll be following standard protocol.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I knew like the end of this month, the day it needed to be done, we already did it.
Okay, I just want to close out Zach's report and then we can maybe circle back a bit. Yeah. Is there anything else, Zach, for us? Anything else for Zach? Thanks for doing all the good cleanups. Thanks for doing all the good cleanups and getting good feedback from people.
Very good.
And I know you've been taking a look at, you know, maybe where you've cut a little bit of people's lawns and kind of remedying and.
That'll be next. Yeah, soon as we go when the furthest snow is actually gone.
Right.
Then we'll be going on a.
Yeah, no, it's much appreciated. Thank you. Thanks to crew. Okay.
What's the warranty on the truck, by the way? What's the warranty on the trucks?
Um, that I don't know.
But they're new.
Hmm.
Yes.
We can find out.
Yeah.
We'll find. Okay.
Okay.
Next up, building inspector. Hey, Steve. Okay, we have Steve's report.
Yeah, so Steve, you brought in fifty two thirty in just the permitting in the last six weeks for our budget. That's huge, right? It's like, it's like you're working on a grant. You're working on a grant. Yeah. Right there. Are you excited?
I'll take anybody, anybody.
Anybody.
Um, and then the other question I have, Steve, I walk by the lu- the luxury apartments down on near the seventh family row.
Yep.
Um, looks like they're being big. Uh, they're starting to bring tenants. Yeah, yeah. Well, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'm down to thirteen hundred.
Wow, that's darn good. That is really good.
Thank you. That's great.
And I know you've been chasing people down and thank you for that. I know it's amazing.
Yes, yes, thanks.
I know.
Is there anything that we should be aware of or that we should have a conversation about?
I do have a concern in my report. In regards to seven five and all.
Uh, yeah, I can speak to that. I've been directly in touch with the consultant, you know, with the inspector. And there will be weekly reports and there's going to be an update issued that'll bring us current. Yep.
So you want weekly reports?
Yep.
Okay.
We all want weekly reports.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for staying on that. It's all I have.
Thanks for your good work.
Well, welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, treasurer's report.
Me.
Yep, coming back to you.
I do apologize somehow in my craziness, I forgot to put the financials for that either. They were done.
Well, we get, you know, we know they're there.
Thank you. It's a good story.
Okay.
But anyway, we'll have that talk next week.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the bill pay looks a little heavy, but we have the rest of air equipped. That's.
Yeah.
We have some attorney bill. So few big tickets, but, um, speaking of air clip, I'm just going to notify the board, the final stages of the hundred thousand dollar grant with D S B was approved.
Yeah.
We received notification yesterday.
Say that again.
The hundred thousand dollar grant went through final, all the final stages of approval, so hopefully pretty soon. I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks I can issue to get reimbursed for the air clip for the heating.
Yeah, we'll get a hundred thousand back.
Good.
So, and that'll help cover and that brings me to the other update. The front porch. Barrel was hoping to have paid work to me for this meeting to go out to bid, so that is delayed till next meeting. Um, we had to do some last minute asbestos testing and other things.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, this because it's so old.
Just to make sure. So, but that's moving along and that will be covered by that grant that was approved from D S B.
Which is great.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there any questions on the bill pay?
If not, am I?
I just, so I'm looking at, um, our crossing guard agreement, County Pittsburgh.
Yep.
Bill pay. So we pay for that? Doesn't it school? Do the schools pay for that?
I. We split it.
We, we all split it.
So town, school, town, village and school split it?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
We've always done it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was, it was implemented, I want to say, hey, five years ago?
It's been a while and then.
Yeah, six years and it's, it's really good.
Yeah, but I heard that they were volunteers. No, we're paying.
No.
I thought they were volunteers. Okay.
No, they're trained and they're, that's what they do.
I think there was a problem with using volunteers.
Yeah, you can't. Yeah.
Yep. Motion to approve the bill pay as presented.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Co.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. And my last thing is we received, as we did last year, and this is a little different. We received requests for the tonne piss, we're to use our parking lot for paneling for, um, they did last year, but I believe this requires court approval.
This part.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
They had activities in our parking lot.
Oh, that's right, the kit for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, the kids loved it. Yeah.
So they're doing the same, just, was it, it wasn't rides or anything, right? It was just like craft tables and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And it's after hours or is it on a weekend?
I think it's during, it's after hours and during the paneling.
Yeah.
So it's not going to affect.
It's Memorial Day weekend.
So you just, so you need a vote of approval?
I need a vote of approval for the mayor to sign the.
So I can sign.
Make a motion for the mayor to sign the access for the town to use our parking lot for paneling for. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Co.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next minutes.
Okay. We have February twenty fifth. Anything?
First one's the budget.
Yeah. Pretty.
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented for February twenty fifth.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Code.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, the meeting, February twenty fifth.
I make a motion to approve the February twenty fifth minutes for the board of trustees, have a second?
Okay, trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Code.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Okay. We can now, member items.
So I have something that, I just kind of have a question and, and some discussion. So since I've been in the board, we have the forty five day. We've been waiving this forty five day non municipal permit. It seems every single time we get one, we waive it. So my question is, why do we even have it and should we look at that and maybe decrease the amount of time? Um, because it seems like it's a waste for us to have a regulation that we never uphold.
It was, it was put in place well before me.
Yeah, because we, I, I.
These applications, they come to him and then sometimes they didn't realize they had it in time. I think it was encouraged to get the applications in plenty of time for the board.
Oh, we didn't have a deadline.
Yeah, we seem to get them at deadline. Um, I say this is up to the board, the only thing. I think, well, let me try to put this in English, some giving some requirement of time is. Good because we have to get it to you, I have to do that, so maybe forty five days is too long. I don't know. I refer to.
I think that. This board, almost any board. They walked in that night and the board was able to understand it well enough, will probably say. Okay, you know, so. You know, it's not like it's, you're publishing it, so there's got to be an advance notice for publication, I think it's up to the board.
Well, isn't it on the agenda? It's, it's in the agenda packet, so you technically you are, you're putting it.
Right, right, no, I know, that's the first notice public gets.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
Well, from a village clerk, clerk standpoint, when do you want to see it?
For me, I like to have a little bit of notice.
So what is a little bit, what would you say?
I mean, as long as. As long as I get it to the packet and it's, if they followed our regular submittal times.
Should I say one week?
Or how about two weeks in between meetings?
That's fourteen days.
I, I have the deadline on the thing, so I usually ask for things like a week before.
So if I may. So we have times where we don't meet for a month. There are sometimes months that go by, right?
Right.
Thirty one days.
Yeah.
If, if after one meeting, okay, the very next day they submit a permit and we have less than thirty one days. It's going to require us to get together for that application, so by having at least thirty one days. It means that the farthest from one meeting to the next. We don't have to hear, we don't have to schedule a special meeting for a permit that should have been in thirty one days beforehand. Right?
No.
No.
The issue is sort of more driven by what is the event.
Right.
Does the event fall within?
But what if the event was the same day as the next meeting, meaning you, you don't, you want the application to come early enough to hit the agenda. And. If there, if we don't have thirty one days and they have a two weeks out and they submitted an application, we have a two week requirement, but our next meeting isn't thirty days. Then we've got to get together because we told them two weeks is enough.
We have, there's five months that fall into this one meeting typically. There's summer.
The summer.
Board tries to do one in.
Holiday.
November and December.
I'm usually a special.
I'm still confused.
Yeah, I am too.
If, if you say, if you say to somebody. You must get your application in ten days before the meeting at which you want to have it heard. That it doesn't matter when your next meeting is, it matters when, it only matters.
Ten days before the meeting.
Have it in at least ten days.
So that's, that's a unique, different way, so instead of being ten days before the event, ten days before the.
For the next meeting.
Right.
Oh, I always thought of it.
Which is what Dorothy, what Dorothy said, because she said my normal meeting submission dates.
Right.
And I think the way it is now, it's forty five days before the event.
Right, so we want.
That's the language we need to.
So. Prior to the meeting.
Ten days before the next meeting.
So depending on how it's written, if it's currently in the code as before the event, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just saying, if it's currently in the code as before the event, I would say reduce it to thirty one. If it's in the code as before the meeting or you want to change it to that, that's fine, and ten days is probably.
So, so you just, you just take it. Take that time provision out of the code and then you're left with your.
My submittal date.
Yeah, then it's a policy submittal.
Yeah, it's on them. Meet your submission dates.
Yeah, because they want to have an event, they're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's no use having a, a requirement or a law.
So as it stands now, it's forty five days prior to the date, non municipal use event is scheduled.
Right.
Minutes. So if you want to just keep the language the same, you reduce it to thirty and that's probably as good as we can get, but if you want to do it.
I'd say we do it, shut up, because we're still gonna have the same problems.
Sure.
There's more clarity, you know, if anytime I think we can make the code clearer, let's say what.
It's easier for all of us.
Yeah.
Can I present a challenge to that though, which is if you do it prior to a meeting, we have the authority to change meetings, delay meetings, defer meetings, not have meetings.
Well, that would be put me, put it on me to look for, no, I have an application.
What's gonna happen is if you did that. Dorothy would say, I would say, I need three of you to do a non municipal.
You need a court.
That's gonna happen before.
Right, which I think.
Which is, and that might happen what, once a year if that?
If that, because you need.
Yeah.
Those have been reduced, I think this is the first one we've had in. Over a year because of the new tools status for them, so I think it's very rare.
Right. So that's ten days, make sense?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I take all my submission dates.
So, right, so if we just say nothing. You take out the time provision entirely. Then they are stuck with your submission date.
Yeah.
As the date most of the year.
Seth, okay.
That works for me.
Alright.
You don't like it, what do you like about, it's, you like it better than having to wave every, every time we come here, we just wave it, it's like, why even have it?
I think it's clear for any.
Yeah, it's clear.
Can we try and, you know, put it in ten days ahead of the meeting?
Do I have to vote on it?
Well, I think you gotta direct Jeff to agree.
Can we direct?
Well, are you, it sounds like James.
I like the days before the event better than the days before the. I just.
Oh, but I want to understand why, but I, please help me with, I want to understand that, really.
I continue to feel that the flexibility of meeting dates. And the more fluid nature that they can be, right, even though they're scheduled, they're in the calendar. Um, if you don't have a, uh, application requirement and a date embedded in the code, when somebody goes to do a non municipal, they're gonna have to look to a different section of the code, talk to the clerk differently. And I think you want, when does it need to go in, embedded in that specific section of the code. And I think days prior to the event, forty five days you go to thirty, I don't mind waiving it, it's like. Quick.
And you raised an interesting point now.
I'm gonna leave it at forty five. I leave it at forty five.
Why change it? Because, because this is sort of where I'm going. The waiving of this is like, I mean, have we ever denied an event that because of the forty five days?
No, we never do, that's what I'm saying.
So, in a way, it's almost moot whether we change it or not after all those discussions, because we would waive it anyway.
I, I'm, I'm not sure that we have. That kind of, um, and the root, well, okay, I'm having a conversation with this, I, we, I don't think we do that for any other. Uh, permitting, that's probably because a lot of them are public hearing permits, so. They're gonna be publicly, they're gonna be heard any of their, it's gonna be a notice anyway, so.
It just sets a precedence, oh, you, you just waive it, just waive that, waive that, waive that, waive that, I just, it seems like it just sets a precedence that none of our requirements are set and we're just gonna be waiving everything.
I would also say though, in the event that an application before some forty five days has a degree of public discourse that has to occur. So far they've been very easy, but it's very possible that you have somebody submitting for a public, non municipal use that's contentious. And you want to give it more time for the community to be able to communicate and, and see it and hear it, and we're, we're waiving it because most of them aren't. That's good, that's okay.
Yeah, it's pretty benign.
Right, so let's just, I'd say let's just keep it going that way. Doesn't hurt anybody and nobody.
Why don't we research what other communities do?
Sure, I can ask them.
Yeah. You know, I, you know, I can see both sides, you know.
There is a reason that it was forty five days originally, but I have no idea what.
Well, it was so long ago though, it seems, right? Okay.
Starting in fifty seven.
Wow, that's something, okay.
Yeah, I did have.
I wasn't around.
Too quick.
Okay, yep.
I just wanted to make a comment to the staff. Yesterday was tough and I'm sorry I had to go through that. And I appreciate your resolve and banding together and, and all the effort that you've put in and just the emotion that you're going through, so maybe stand behind you, let us know how we can help.
Thanks.
And I know the mayor's been in communication a lot with you guys and, and so. And then I had a question to Jeff with regards to the refuse district and have you come to any understanding?
Still, I'm still standing with you. The woman. She hasn't gotten it. Final answer. We had a couple of other things come up. In the same time, just haven't gotten that.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll remind her.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just, it just in line with what, you know, the events that occurred here yesterday. Um, I'd like it on the next agenda, maybe that we really kind of drill down here on what does safety and security look like? For our employees here and also at the DPW, what does that look like where I just, I do not want. Our, our staff and our DPW to come to work every day with like a pit in their stomach. Because they don't feel safe. So I think that should be on the next agenda and maybe take a look at. You know, our, our security cameras, maybe they need to, you know, we need maybe a little better there. Other possibilities with security when you enter the doors into the office, you know, those kinds of things. I know the police department said that they would be willing, the sheriff's department, excuse me, would be willing to come out. Um, they did it once and that, but maybe revisit some security measures that they thought would be helpful. And I think we should bring this back to the whole board for discussion.
Yeah, I think definitely a definition between our private space and the public space.
Yeah.
You know. We're always willing to tour with the residents, that's not it, but we definitely need that defining.
People have to feel safe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does, um. To have conversations about security, um, can we do that in a private session?
I don't. I don't think so.
So. That's interesting.
Well. Well.
No, there was, there was a discussion I had at Nikon, when it does affect. Uh, having the public know about something that may compromise the security of people in the building, if they were to know about that.
Right.
Then it would, that.
Right.
Good.
Would be.
Okay.
An opportunity for us to take it a bit offline.
And the follow up question to that is, to what degree, uh, mayor, do you have the authority within the administration? To. Improve security matters independently from the board, and do we only get involved when we have to pay for something?
I don't really know the answer to that, but I would think that, that everything having to do. With this building is a matter for the trustees.
Yeah, to be honest with you.
I don't think that the mayor has the authority to do, act you're out unilaterally.
Okay, I just wanted to ask a question.
I mean, at one point yesterday, there was concern for the immediate safety, so the building was placed on lockdown. You know, but that is, that's a different kind of matter.
Yeah.